Right, formally, good morning, everyone. Housing Policy Committee, today, 24th of April 2025, both in here and online. So, morning, everyone. We're as corset as we're going to be, we are corset, we're as well attended as we're going to be today, I think we've just got one person we're short of today. I'll just do some round of introductions as usual for the record, and then we'll come back to the agenda. So, start with me, so I'm Douglas Johnson, I'm councillor for City Ward, and I chair this committee. And this time, if we can go round to my right, first of all, councillor Norris, you want to introduce yourself, and then we'll go round.
That's it. I'm Alison Norris, and I'm Labour spokesperson for housing.
Fran Balbin, councillor for First Park Ward, and substituting today.
Good morning, I'm councillor Mike Chaplin, representing Southie Ward.
Good morning, I'm councillor Alan Woodcock, representing East Ecclesdale Ward.
Councillor Rebecca Atkinson for Dorantotley Ward, I'm also substituting today.
Councillor Penny Baker, vice-chair, and councillor Stan Eaton Ward.
Paul Turpin, Green councillor, Cleveland Valley.
Thanks all, and lastly, the officers who are sitting here to introduce themselves, too, we'll start with Sherry.
Sherry Grant, Assistant Director for Leagum.
Hi, I'm Amanda Clayton from the Democratic Services.
I'm just Nick. Alan Harris, the manager of forecasting. Thank you, Alan. And finally, Chris.
Good morning, Chris Ellison, interim director of housing.
Thanks, everyone, and the other staff here, we'll just ask you to introduce yourselves when you come up to the mic there. So, if we just look at apologies, so we have got apologies formally from councillor Mark Jones, councillor Mia Drasick, and councillor Richard Williams, and we've got the substitutes, as noted, so, and we've got a note of that, haven't we? That's great, thank you very much. So, just before we go on further, I just want to suggest we go through the reordering of the agenda, as we've discussed previously. So, after the items one to seven, which are the procedural ones, I think we suggested that we'd go, to make the plan of the meeting flow okay, so we do number nine first, the Decarbonisation Action Plan, followed by item 11, the Warm Homes Local Grant, and then back to item eight, the Asbestos Management Policy, then item 10, Commissioning Decision for Contract for Supply of Kitchens, and then finally, back at the end of the agenda, the item 12, the Supported Housing Regulatory Oversight Act 2023 Consultation. So, I think this has discussed between the group leads, can I just check if everyone's happy with that reordering? Yeah, thanks, that's good, so if we, I don't know if we have to formally note that, but we'll go through it. Okay, so, back on the agenda, item two is exclusion of present public, and I don't think there's any cause to exclude anyone today. Number three is declarations of interest, does anyone have any declarations for today? Don't see any, thank you very much. Number four is the minutes of the previous meeting, which you'll find at page 11, can I check if anyone is happy to accept those as a true record? Thanks, Penny, so proposed councillor Baker, and, well, I'll second that, right, that's good. All happy? Yeah, let's take that as unanimously approved, thank you very much. So, item five are the public petitions, questions, and statements, so, I'll ask Amanda to guide me here, but as far as I know, we don't have any petitions, we have had one question, which has been responded to in writing in advance, that's on the collection of the residual tenant levy, you'll find that question and answer on the website now. We don't have any other oral questions today, and I don't think we have any statements, so unless everyone tells me otherwise, I think that's it, isn't it? Great, thank you very much. And item six is members' questions, which I don't think we have any this time, okay. Item seven is the work programme, so this is where we'll call on Amanda Clayton to tell us what's happening on that one.
I don't have anything of note to add, but you can see that the forward plan for the coming municipal year is coming along quite well, but dates obviously for the meetings are not agreed yet until we reach the AGM, but the outline is there for each one, so you can see meeting one, meeting two, et cetera, and it's building up nicely, but there are no key points for me to highlight at this stage.
Right, thanks very much. So, we've got the, the, sorry, I'll come to you in a moment, in fact, I'll come to you now, councillor Balbin, over to you.
I just thought it was worth mentioning, because we've been looking at work planning as part of the work we're doing on remits on governance committee, and particularly looking at some of the good practice we want to put in place for committees, and one of the suggestions is that we have a kind of work planning away day at the start of each municipal year, so I know that this is the last meeting for this committee for this year, but that really enables all committees to look ahead, but to plan in time, particularly around consultation and public involvement and things like that, so I just thought it was worth mentioning that that's, that might be a useful thing to do ahead of the next committee meeting, to make sure there's a work plan that's really looking ahead across the whole year, and making time for relevant pieces of work, thanks.
Thanks, that's a useful thought, Ed, and just to check, you're talking about that's a task for each committee to do, yeah, so, okay, so that's something to come to in, whenever the meeting is, in June or July, whatever the date is to be set, isn't it? So, okay, all right. Councillor Turpin.
Thanks, well, bearing in mind that last statement, that maybe we will be discussing that at a future date, but I just wanted to ask that we look at the garage letting scheme, there seems to be quite a lot of problems, and I know it has been revised in some way over previous years, but it feels like there's a lot of potential we could unlock, and there's also an element of unfairness that we could deal with as well.
Sorry, my mic was on. Yeah, so garage, I'm sure is something that we flagged up, or something that needs looking at at some point this year, so shall we have a note of that? It might be something just to take forward as a knowledge briefing, first of all, and then see if we can work out what decision we might need to bring to a committee. I'm guessing we've got some general agreement to take in that forward, because there was an issue that was flagged up. Shall we make a note that that's been raised, and then we can pick that up in due course? Helpful addition, then. Okay, councillor Norris.
And I just wanted to say I welcome the suggestion of a work planning away day at the beginning of the year, because one of the concerns I had was that the Rough Sleeping Action Plan isn't assigned to any particular committee, and I know that the temporary accommodation strategy is coming in June, so I don't know if it made sense for those to come together, but those are the kind of questions in incorporating additional work that we could really thrash out if we had an away day.
I think that's absolutely right, so let's go on to this. Okay, all right, so with that in mind, there's plenty of work to do at the beginning of the next municipal year, are we happy to approve the work plan as it is today, as sit out in the documents? Getting nods there, so let's take that as approved as unanimous, thank you very much. So, that's the agenda, that was item seven, and we're now going on to, it's not item eight, but it's item nine, so the decarbonisation action plan, so I'll ask our staff, Dean and Nathan, to come up, and first thing is, would you like to settle and introduce yourselves, and then take us through a summary of the paper? So, obviously, we've got the paper, we've read it, it's been published on the website for the public to see. Over to you.
Good morning, everybody, I'm Dean Wiltshire, I'm our head of housing investment and maintenance.
Good morning, I'm Nathan Robinson, I'm housing decarbonisation manager.
Thanks, and welcome to you, and who's going to go first? Is it you, Nathan? Thank you very much.
Good morning, everybody. So, this morning, I am bringing a report that sets out the housing decarbonisation plan across the following year for 2025-2026. This follows a series of workshops that we held late last year and early into this year with committee members, in terms of reviewing the housing, council housing, decarbonisation roadmap to net zero, carbon at zero, and members requested visibility in terms of what the decarbonisation plan looked like for housing across this year. Just to set out some sort of principles that sit behind the plan, I think it is ambitious in terms of what we are aiming to achieve, but I think against that is, it is deliverable and feasible in terms of what's in there. The report sets out 13 sort of distinctive work packages or work streams that cut across both council housing and private sector homes across the city. To kind of summarise, eight of those packages are around council housing, and five of those are either within the public, within the private sector, or transcend across all tenures. Obviously, I won't spend time going through each of the kind of individual work streams, but just to summarise, within the report, the first work stream set out between one to three reflects the grant income and schemes which we are successfully delivering and will continue to deliver within the city, bringing in government and various grant funding money to deliver across homes within the city, and again, that is across both council housing and private sector homes. Item four sets out a comprehensive piece of work we are doing to develop a PV strategy for council homes, and again, we would seek to use this to inform a wider city approach as well, so again, a kind of multi-tenure view of a solar PV strategy for council housing. Again, just to reaffirm our ambitions in terms of leveraging and maximising as much grant funding within the city, and item six talks about an application through MCS, which is one of the kind of technical bodies in retrofit, to deliver a deep retrofit pilot scheme within the city. Again, just to draw on a key area, item nine, which features within the housing revenue account business plan for council homes, and that is around our aspirations as a council, for all council homes to reach an energy performance rating of C by 2030, so again, reflects more work that we need to do in terms of developing a plan and a roadmap there. Again, without individually going through each point, the only other sort of item I'd probably pick up on is item 13, around performance reporting, and again, I think as a service, we reflect that there is more we need to do in terms of transparency and the thoroughness of reporting, in terms of across the council and across members of the public, so we are working to develop a platform where we can deliver clarity in terms of what the carbon reduction impacts are, of the work that we are doing as a service within residential housing, but equally as well in terms of the impacts to energy savings and fuel savings within homes. Obviously, as a key area of retrofit, it's not just about decarbonising homes, but fundamentally, it's intertwined in terms of tackling the seriousness of fuel poverty within the city and reducing bills for people within homes, so I'll stop there. The recommendation is set out within the paper, requests that the committee approve the 2526 housing decarbonisation work plan as set out in the report.
Thanks very much. Anything to add to your point of view, Dean? Right, okay, let's move to the committee, any questions on that, first of all, councillor Norris?
I was looking at the proposal on page 66 for staff resources for an additional two posts, and I just wanted to confirm that resources are available through the existing business unit for those posts, and that, as far as I understand it from the workshop work, that that was essential, that those two people were in post, because we need them to progress the work at the scale and pace, to meet the targets that are set out in our plans, a wider council plans, so I just wanted to check, you know, there are significant, as you outlined, social, financial, and health benefits of decarbonisation, and just wanted to check that those two members of staff will be recruited.
Thank you, councillor Norris. Yeah, I mean, it's honest to say, as a small team, we are working at capacity, and I think we deliver some great outcomes for the city. Certainly, again, I'll refer to the ambition that we want to do more and faster, and that will take additional capacity within the service, it's a conversation certainly that Dean and I have had, and I think the commitment is there in terms of scaling up resources to match what's in this report.
Councillor Norris, obviously, where we're drawing down external grant funding, that grant funding comes with a commitment to apply the appropriate resources to that, so the more external funding that we bring in, we've got more opportunities to develop the team. One of the things that me and Nathan had a meeting about yesterday was the solar PV strategy, and bringing that to committee at some point this calendar year, that again, in terms of solar PV, comes with a big resource implication in terms of how we're going to do the work that needs to underpin, understanding the requirements within that, so what Nathan will be looking at is, piece by piece, project by project, where there's capacity in the team, and then be producing a report to me, that then I'll be putting the appropriate vacancy control form forward to make sure that we consider the right resources for the team.
Yeah, councillor, do you want to come back on that?
Yeah, just to come back, that as far as I understand it, we've got the reasons for those two additional members of staff now to take the pilots forward, so it's not dependent on bringing in any additional funding, so, okay.
Thanks, I think it is an important point, I mean, if we're going to endorse this, then yes, it implies that the committee will certainly be back getting these two people into post as soon as possible, so it's a point well made, isn't it? Can I just go to the other side, and take councillor Baker next?
Thanks, Nathan, for the report, it's very obvious how a lot of this depends on grant funding, and it makes it really difficult to commit in as timely a manner as we would like to, we accept that. Under item six, we're on about somebody, the grant application, to deliver a retrofit demonstrator property. Can you expand on that a little bit for me, please, and then have another item, Chair? Thank you.
Yeah, of course, so the MCS is looking for innovative retrofit schemes, so projects that there haven't been too much of, we think that there is great benefit, and again, there's not too many instances, certainly would be a first within our council housing stock of carrying out a deep retrofit project, so what that would mean is a very sort of holistic view, taking a property, ensuring it's fully insulated, and effectively insulated, but also in terms of applying clean heat, so something like an air source heat pump, and combined with solar PV, so a kind of holistic view in terms of removing fossil fuels to electrify heat within the property, that achieves its ambition in terms of being a net zero home, as well as micro generating energy through solar PV, which can support grid decarbonisation, as well as fundamentally helping to offset energy costs within the home. But it would be a demonstrator to prove that it works, that it's economically viable in terms of delivery and for the household, and it can be an engagement piece in terms of demonstrating to other tenants and residents that it does work, it allays some of the myths and fears around retrofit that is so important in terms of having that city context example.
Thanks very much, okay, so, yes, of course, back to you, councillor.
Apologies, Chair, I know you set it up, Nathan, and it's been something I've been watching for a long time, because for just something as a website in the private sector, it reaches quite a lot of people, it allows people who live in the private sector, particularly people who have no idea about how to retrofit their home, it's something that accesses, gives them an access to the information that they need, and I think it's really well appreciated, and I'm really pleased to see that it's been reviewed and updated. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thanks, that's a good comment, then, okay. Go back to the other side now, I'll bring in councillor Chaplin, and just get you press this thing, I'll say, Mike.
Morning, Mike. Good morning, Douglas. Sorry, I thought Paul was next, but.
So, I'll call you unless you.
That's very kind of you. No, I welcome this report, this, it's really good to see this here on the agenda, at a time when some governments on the other side of the Atlantic are in denial about climate change, and we know that our housing stock is a key contributor at the moment to carbon emissions, but in particular, I do want to give some praise to Alison for her persistence in getting the workshops in ahead of this paper, so that members here, not just Labour, but Greens and Dems here, understand the importance of this work and why we need to do it. So, there you go, Alison, thank you for making sure that we got briefed properly ahead of this paper coming to committee.
Great, no, thanks, that's a very pointed point, too. Go back to this side, I'll bring councillor Turpin this time.
Thank you. A couple of years ago, Mike, I did actually threaten Douglas that I would go and strike if we didn't get this onto the work plan, so I'll take some credit along with Alison. So, I've just, I've got a couple of things I'd just like to quiz you about. I think there's too much on, so, sorry, let's start with a positive, it's an excellent report, and it's, the list of initiatives is really impressive, and I'm really pleased with all of the work that you've done, and that's going to go ahead. Right, now I'll put the rotten meat in the sandwich, is that I think there's too much on the clean energy generation, and I think it's, I don't think it's the right thing to do, to put an expensive air source heat pump on an individual home, when we've got so many homes to improve. I also think that we should be following PAS 2035 and using a fabric-first approach, and of course, once you've improved the fabric, the diminishing returns of replacing the energy system is, mean that it will never, or it's highly unlikely to ever be, have the cost paid back, or the carbon cost effectiveness, and actually, there's nothing in the report that accounts for the whole life carbon costs. So, in attempting to try and go zero carbon, we are putting maybe five tonnes of carbon in one air source heat pump, plus all of the carbon if we have to improve the heating system, we're putting, you know, potentially five plus tonnes of carbon into a house that will never be repaid during the life of that system, and also, you could be looking at £20,000 if you're putting in the device and improving the heating system as well, which, you know, you could really well insulate a few homes for that, so I think that would be a more impactful way. And then, so I do also get that some of these things are kind of like experiments and pilots, so I think it's really important that we consider the payback period, the carbon cost effectiveness, and the whole life carbon costs in these. I've got two smaller points to make, but can I let the officers respond?
Do you want to come back in on the fabric-first approach?
No, I completely agree, and if it's not clear within this report, we absolutely do take a fabric-first approach fundamentally, in terms of approach to the council's housing stock. I dare say there are lots of other organisations out there that are utilising PV, solar PV, as a means of getting their homes to E P C C because of the impact that it has on SAPs goals, we haven't done that deliberately for that very reason, is that we've invested in the property fabric, so an example being the Social Housing Fund Wave Three, again, there is no PV content within that scheme, it is all fundamentally about loft, cavity, insulation at scale, so absolutely, I agree the point in terms of that fabric first, and we do deliver that. Again, to touch on the point in terms of, we do ambitions in terms of solar PV, because it absolutely does deliver a range of benefits, and to your point, they are pilots, so it's looking at what the impacts, what are the funding models and mechanisms, and again, as Dean alluded, we will bring a PV strategy to committee for you to understand what that vision looks like, and obviously influence in terms of what that looks like. And on the other point, in terms of whole life carbon costs, again, I agree, again, within this work package, we want to do and need to do more in terms of understanding the whole life impact, it's very difficult, it'd be a long conversation getting into it, but we want to and know we need to do better in terms of understanding that sort of end-to-end supply chain impact, so we will work on that. And the final point around the air source heat pumps is, again, we are piloting it within a city context, predominantly that is, well, that is wholly being funded from government funding, so we are taking advantage of a ring fence fund. So we are taking advantage of a ring fence fund within the Social Housing Fund that will wholly pay for the installations and again, we've done that analysis, it is a good thing we believe for the city in terms of trialling and delivering and being able to assess those units.
Just to carry on from that councillor Turpin is, one of the things that we've been looking at, lots of other housing providers have gone down a similar path and installed and had lots of pilots and gone large scale in terms of the initiatives that they've put in place but sometimes have not put the evaluation criteria in place at the same time. What we're trying to do here is with the number of pilots and retrofit pilots that we're going to put in places, totally understand the impact on the stock and the properties that we have. And one of the key things, and I only spoke to Nathan about this yesterday, was work out very clear what is the return on the investment that we are investing within this particular area. Because you could argue at the moment, the vast majority of this money is coming from external funding. At some point, potentially within the asset management strategy that we'll bring to you in March 2026, we will have to potentially invest some of our resources in that. So we want to be able to demonstrate to yourselves that for every pound that we're investing within our stock has the right payback period for the right reason.
Thanks very much. Councillor Jevon, do you want to go on to your two points?
Thanks, that's really positive you know and it's good to hear that you do understand and get those points. And you know, we don't want to do our best to reduce carbon and end up increasing it, you know. So the other two points which hopefully just will be short points, I wanted to ask, is there a plan to get these and other measures through the planning process when you know, there's something outside the building? And the other thing, with there being a series of contracts being procured, can we mandate training and apprentices when procuring those services?
Thanks, one of you want to answer that?
Yes, so to the point, we're already liaising with planning colleagues in terms of just understanding the impacts there. So again, we'll have done that due diligence ahead of project delivery.
Yeah, and just in terms of the commercial aspects of that, obviously it's one of the key drivers within the council's plan in terms of training initiatives and apprenticeships. So in any contract that we are awarding them in it, particularly through the housing function is, we're always looking at opportunities and how we can make sure that we're utilising the capacity that we've got within our purchasing to maximise those opportunities. So that will be factored into that definitely.
Great, thanks for that reassurance, okay. Councillor Belbin, did you want to ask something first of all?
Thanks. Yeah, firstly I think it's a really good report, it's really good to see all this in one place if you like and see everything alongside each other and I think it's really interesting to see the variety of different things that we are trialling, which I think does speak to some of councillor Turpin's points actually, that we can look at how successful and how much different approaches are delivering. I wanted to ask specifically around the performance reporting aspect, so I think because of the way it's split on the papers, it's a bit difficult to see. I think the plan is to have the portal in place for the summer, is that right? Which I think could be fantastic and we'll be able to draw on some of this comparative data for how effective some of these schemes are in terms of carbon reduction etc. And I wondered, just picking up on Paul's point there, whether there's, is there a way of building in the stuff around the lifetime carbon capture reduction within that reporting? Is that something we can think about doing? And then I had a question about where will this information be reviewed? A lot of the performance data we're collecting is reviewed at Finance and Performance Committee. Is that the plan that it will be reviewed there and will it keep coming to this committee as well? And again, that probably feeds back into the work planning points actually at the start of the year and will there be plans to look at some of these individual schemes and kind of report on effectiveness as they come to an end perhaps with each grant scheme? Thinking through, so that we're looking at them individually as well and considering them individually but also doing that comparative piece, just how will the reporting, where will it be looked at I suppose in terms of member involvement with that and how often etc. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Belbin, I think great, great question. So the council adopted a platform called Power BI in terms of its performance reporting and management. So we are looking to get it onto that platform so that we're consistent with other areas. It's great because it allows you to manipulate data very easily, so you're not being expert at all and you can kind of cross-reference and piece data. So the, you know, the ambition is that we just want to be pragmatic and we want to get the information out there because again, agree, there's a lot of appetite to understand and see what the impacts of these schemes and the work that our service are delivering. We will iterate over time. I think it's very fair and likely to say day one, it's probably not going to look at the whole life costing because again, it's a complex piece, there's definitely more we need to do behind there. But that kind of day one offer, as we've said summertime, we'll definitely seek to give clarity in terms of, again, different project outcomes, the impacts across a multitude of these disciplines that are contained within the report. Our, again, aspiration is as part of the Homes web development is the potential to embed some of this report in there. So again, it's very publicly available and accessible. Not sure if there'll be technical confines in terms of how we can do that, so that's something we're still exploring. But certainly from my perspective, happy to feed that into whichever meetings, forums that would be interested to see the data. And again, that'll be part of a consultation piece. I think once we've got it ready, that we can invite some feedback, both as internally as committee members, we can refine it and make sure we're publishing it in the right places.
Thanks that, I think that's a good point about yeah, how we're going to monitor. I'm sure that this committee, given the interest, will want to monitor performance on all those areas and it'll be something to feed into the work planning for, which was starting the summer. Okay, right. Councillor Woodcott, you've been very patient, I haven't ignored you.
Thanks Douglas. Mine's a specific question around the MCS foundation grant application. How will you choose a demonstrator house? That's one question. Bear in mind that Stockbridge could have six inches of snow and Mosborough could have bright sunshine. So how are you going to pick the demonstrator house that's going to give you the correct information that we need?
Yeah, and that's something that we are currently wrestling with in terms of the application and I dare say we've probably not arrived on a final conclusion. It will be imperfect because as you say, the location, the archetype of the property will vary. Obviously we've got lots of different archetypes. I think our thinking currently steers toward an archetype within the housing profile which is common. So again, it will reflect, you know, it's not that it's a unique property, it's something that we'll have lots of and we'll be able to demonstrate across a wide tenant base that this is the impact of those works on that type of property. I think, you know, there is a medium longer term view that, you know, we will continue to draw in funding. Again, as Dean alluded to, the evaluation will then hopefully precipitate that we may do then other and identify other archetypes, other locations where we can expand that kind of piloting and learning across the city. So again, we've not currently concluded a specific property. I think it's not just about the property but it's about the household that lives within that property and about their engagement with, you know, ways of living, how the technology works. So again, we will want it to be matching that together so that we can maximise the impacts of that learning.
Okay Alison.
Thanks very much. Councillor Norris, do you have another question?
On page 70, 12.3, you talk about collaboration with SIMCA which is particularly important given, you know, some doing preparatory work around the devolution, single settlement plan and looking at attracting further results. I just wanted to ask about social housing added in there because you've got obviously the private let and the private owned, but I would have thought that another key piece is the social housing.
Thank you councillor Norris. Whether anybody is, I'm not absolutely cited in terms of what that journey looks like in terms of the devolution deal, particularly around retrofit. I think what this work item does is just set that out there, gives visibility that as a service across housing, you know, we will be, so already we're starting to feed into the Mayor and Conservative Authority in terms of, again, the work streams that we're involved in, starting to build up Sheffield's profile in terms of how we will feed into that devolution bid. So again, there'll be lots of key players that feed into it, certainly my team will have an involvement in there. Again, not cited in terms of the specifics, I think they will start to become clearer probably within the months coming. But again, it's just a site really that we are involved, we're at the table, we're kind of clearly pushing Sheffield's interests and ambitions and ideas forwards in terms of at a regional level.
Thanks very much. Anything to add? No, okay. One more question councillor Turpin.
Thank you. One thing, it just occurred to me and maybe it's just something that is in, it's obvious that it's going to happen, but it's just so obvious that it hasn't been mentioned in the report. Ventilation, there's nothing about ventilation in there, you know, it's really important if we insulate, it needs to have a ventilation strategy. So I'm just asking a question that it would be assumed that that will happen.
Yes, someone going to approach to ventilation?
Yes, just say all our retrofit projects are PAS 2035 compliant and obviously there is a ventilation strategy that underpins and to give confidence, you possibly caught recently, particularly around the Eco Four scheme, that Trustmark who are the, you know, they manage quality within that area, identifies issues in that field, it's probably the least regulated field in terms of retrofit. Talking from a Sheffield context, you know, we have gone through substantial business scrutiny in terms of how we deliver our projects, giving confidence in terms of certification, actual assessments of work on the ground and we've come out of it in terms of in a very, very strong position. So again, a real confidence that we are effectively delivering on the PAS 2035 conditions. And we've done lots of EWI, external wall insulation, which is one of the highest risk areas that potentially can cause damp and mould. We've done lots of work with tenants, we've written out post projects, asking for them to raise any issues, concerns in terms of they and we've had no instances and we've done lots of engagement in that field. So again, I can come with real confidence that we're managing that well.
Thanks, very important point for reassurance on, so thanks for raising your hand. So I think we're happy to look at that. The recommendations on page 64, we're being asked to approve this, I'm sure the committee won't do that, so I'm just saying thanks Nathan to you and your team for bringing all this together. It's something that the committee's been really quite keen to ask about for some time, perhaps we've been trying to push everyone in the right direction to get that done. It's good to see that we've got things going right across the public and private sectors and also that we've got some things like the demonstrator project which will test out what can be done but also not forgetting that most of the technology is there and it just needs doing at as big a scale as we can. So there's been that element of the approach too. So I think that's very welcome and it's good to get this whole range of different projects coming together in one paper so we can see them coherently. So is everyone happy to approve that plan? Nods around, so that's great. So let's take that as done unanimously. Thank you for that and we will pick this up in the work planning in the summer. If we move on to the next item, don't move out of your seats, and we'll go on to the item not in order, it's item 11 on the agenda, the Warm Homes Local Grant. Paper's on page 89 everyone and Nathan shall I leave it to you to introduce what this one is?
I'll try again to be brief, I know it's not my strong suit, but yes, so this paper is around the Warm Homes Local Grant. Again, in terms of background and context, delighted to say that we secured funding for the city of just over 3.4 million and that we believe will help retrofit around 220 private sector homes within the city. And I'll explain in terms of some of the criteria around what properties the scheme targets. Disappointed equally that, you know, we put in the maximum bid that we could on behalf of Sheffield. Unfortunately, the scheme was oversubscribed hugely at a national level, so the government have had to constrain funding at individual city town levels. And so we did get less than what we bid for, but still positive that we can make an impact within private sector homes within the city. It's a three year scheme that will run between 25 and 28 and its primary target is around improving homes that are below an energy performance rating of C and bring those homes up to a C rating. In terms of the kind of target audience, so very deliberately, the scheme targets low income, fuel poor homes within the city. And the criteria that the government adopts in terms of that definition are homes with a gross annual income of less than £36,000 per year or alternatively are on means tested benefits. So they are the kind of two primary criteria in terms of income levels and fuel poverty assessment. And again, obviously, we are looking at homes that are ranged between EPC D, 2G in terms of energy performance rating. I'll probably note at that point that in terms of the report that was initially published, there was a knowledge briefing session ahead of this committee meeting. That paper was, or this paper was discussed and a number of recommendations put forward in terms of how, so the outline of the paper originally was set against the government's policy criteria. There is scope within that sort of policy umbrella that as a city, we can refine or adjust some of our approach. And I think that collective feedback from members of the knowledge briefing was that yes, we wanted to refine the approach and adopt a more focused approach where we had greater confidence that this funding would be meeting homes that were in most need. So we've gone away and explored a range of opportunities in terms of how we might deliver that and particularly working with public health colleagues. We have developed a evidence based approach in which the recommendation set out within the amendment is that within, so within the existing policy criteria, that we can prioritise funding towards four groups, four kind of demographics which are again, fully evidenced and deemed as groups that would be most impacted by fuel poverty and the impacts of cold. Those four groups are households with children living in them, aged 65 or older, living with a long term health condition and living with a disability. So our recommendation as part of the administration of this policy is that we would adopt those prioritisations when we receive applications in. Again, it's an evidence based approach, there are clear guidance in terms of how we would assess homes with health conditions and disability. Within that, to administer the scheme, we would effectively manage two lists and that would balance against the risk of not delivering the funding. So again, the clear message from members is we of course want to spend every pound of the grant funding and to mitigate against some of that risk, we can have a prioritisation list and we will conduct, you know, as we have done on previous schemes, detailed marketing and engagement schemes and strategies to meet. and strategies to meet those demographics within the city. But we can also maintain a secondary list, if you will, of all households that meet the eligibility criteria. So if at any time we were not to get applications in from those priority groups, then we still have homes that meet the criteria that would still benefit from the works. So that is the recommendation. Append it to the report, so as part of delivering the scheme, we would need to amend the private sector assistance policy. So again, these recommendations are set out within an amended part of that policy. And in terms of the recommendations within this report, recommendation one will need adjusting based on the changes that have been proposed. I'll possibly leave to Chair in terms of.
Do you want to come in at that point? Let me come in and just say what propose we do. So it's quite right, I mean, it's good that you've described the process that responding to members' feedback since this agenda was published, bringing the public health angle, identifying four groups of people, we can only say that, you know, we agree should have priority for those. And essentially, it's about combating disadvantage. Some people find it very easy to apply for grants relatively, and some people find it very hard. So the feedback was to move away from the first come, first served basis. So what propose we do is, if you look at the recommendations set out on page 91, there's four recommendations. It's proposed we just remove the words in the recommendation one that say on a first come, first served basis. And that will allow the officers the flexibility to target the grants at the people in most in need. And then there's a second one in recommendation two, we're being asked to replace the text in the private sector housing assistance policy. So there's a revised version that's on everyone's desks, and which we can ask to publish on the website after the meeting if that's approved. So it's clear what that's, and that just brings in the effect of the recommendation that you've just described, Nathan. So if members are happy with that approach, that's what I propose we do at the end of the meeting then. Nathan, I think that addresses the point you're making. So I'll bring in members' questions. Councillor Beldon's first, unless it's particularly for us. Let's just deal with that textual point then.
I have just read this, I've just been scanning this amended version, and it appears that we've lost the bit about they must come from the area of the, what is it, lowest decile of, I can't think what the actual words are because I can't find it in the amended copy. We appear to have lost the geographical link to poorer parts of the city.
Let me, yeah, Nathan, are you able to answer that point?
Yeah, of course. So within the scheme guidance, there is a potential that within IMDs, so indices of multiple deprivation areas one to two, that we can target homes within those areas and forego any income assessment. So it is that the scheme assumes through its policy that anybody living within an IMD one to two area will be within the sort of income tolerance of the scheme. Again, initial member feedback was that there will be homes that live within IMD one to two areas that will be above that income threshold. And the prevailing view again was to ensure that this grant was getting to homes within most need, that as an authority, we should still apply those income assessments across all homes that want to access the scheme, whether they are in IMD one to two areas or otherwise. So that is inherent within the administration of the scheme.
Yes.
So has it not just been removed by replacing the text?
Can we just check, was that in the in the original version of the amended policy? So I think the question is about targeting these grants in the poorest areas of the city, I think in the two lowest deciles of index multiple deprivation. You're talking about the households who live in those areas of poverty, but actually their income might be higher than the 36,000 threshold. Was that in the original draft?
Chair, I think we're referring to three on item 93, I think.
So we're talking about page 93, yes. Let's just give Nathan a moment to see what, where we think we're going with this.
Sorry, we found the section. Yes, got it. Thank you. Yep, so the third line down, classified low income and meet at least one of the following. So you're right, that's missed that in terms of that needs removing, that point in terms of residing in an area ranked in the lowest income deciles. So again, what, to clarify, that's not that we won't focus on those areas because invariably, you know, these are going to be some of the most fuel-poor, lowest income areas of the city. So clearly, it's right to target marketing and engagement in those areas. Again, this is serving to clarify that we won't forego any income assessments just because a home is within that area. We will still conduct that income assessment. And again, we do that with all applicants, again, to give confidence that there is a lot of support in place for anybody wanting to access the scheme and making an application through both us as the council, through delivery partners, we work with lots of voluntary sector organisations, through LEAP, Green Doctors. So there are an array of different organisations that will provide support to homes wanting to apply into the scheme.
Yeah, councillor Turpin.
I don't think it should be dropped at all, if I can just give you, the thing is, I remember when we did this a few years ago, I think it was the lad two then, and it was a similar proposal. And an example I gave then, that you could have a family with a 90% mortgage in Gleedless Valley who wouldn't be eligible, but you could have a retired couple in Nether Edge who were mortgage-free in a half-million-pound home and 200 grand in savings in the bank, who would be eligible. So I would still personally prefer to keep that geographical link in the policy.
Right, okay. Let me bring in some other members, and I don't know if anyone wants to address that point in particular. I'll bring you first councillor Norris, if that's okay.
I don't mind, no.
I'm actually easy either way, Fran, Alison.
I'll go, okay. Just I would strongly disagree with that Paul. I live in an area of multiple, one of the poorest wards in the city, and it's definitely across that ward, there's variation. And I completely agree with the strategy that we're going for in terms of reaching the people in most need. Because what we're looking at is really good targeted marketing and outreach with VCS partners in areas where people, you know, like exactly you were saying Doug, just about some people find it very hard to apply for grants. You know, language, education, cultural bias, all sorts of things. But I know within my ward, there's people who don't need this money, who could perfectly well do this work themselves. And I want to make sure we target the people. We've only got 220. I want to make sure it goes to the right place.
Thanks. I mean, it's helpful to have that country view expressed as well. Councillor Beldon, do you want to come in on, I love that point, or a separate point?
Well, it was to ask some questions, so, but I do agree with what Alison said there in terms of the targeting in particular, I think, and making sure that, you know, people in all parts of the city, if they are eligible for this kind of support and need this kind of support, are able to get it. My questions were actually about, and again, I have to apologise as a substitute, I've not been to knowledge briefings, and I've had limited time to engage with the papers, so this might be answered within them or at the briefings. But I was trying to understand the criteria for landlords a bit better. So this talks about if the applicant must be, must have the gross annual income of 36,000 or less, does that apply to landlords as well? Or is that applied to the tenant of a landlord? I didn't fully understand how that bit worked. Or how landlords become eligible for this. And also, I wondered around whether there is any safeguarding for the tenants of those landlords, you know, potentially a landlord gets this kind of investment into a property. You know, could they then just go, right, well, I'm a victim of that tenant, and I'm now increasing my rent because I've got this fantastic, you know, advantages to my property now. So what kind of safeguards would be in place around that? I'm not saying that most landlords would do such a thing. I know we have lots of fantastic landlords within the city. And potentially, I don't know if there's anything within the kind of renters' rights legislation that's coming forward that might safeguard around that as well. But I just wanted to understand a bit more about, and given the way you've put forward the amendment, would this automatically mean, for instance, that landlords were in that second priority group? Where, yes, landlords might get these grants if there were insufficient applicants who were either owner-occupiers or tenants. Though the tenants would have to work with their landlord anyway, wouldn't they? So just trying to understand that a bit better. Thanks.
Thanks, yeah. Do you want to try and answer those two questions?
Yeah, of course. So in terms of the sort of national scheme level, it's a response by, so it's the Department for Energy Security and Net Zero. A reflection of that previous schemes have always required that private landlords, if they wanted to access this funding, would need to provide a sizeable match. And again, the national picture from that was that very few landlords accessed the grant. Again, as I'm sure is depicted elsewhere within the country, within Sheffield, some of our, again, most fuel-poor, some of the worst performing homes in terms of energy is within the private rented sector. So again, a very deliberate strategy from the government to try and target funds towards private renters. To address the first point, so in terms of eligibility criteria, it's about the tenant, not the landlord. So all eligibility is conducted against the tenant. Landlords and private owner-occupiers are treated equally based on the criteria that the scheme has, is it set out? And I think the second point, so we have been working with colleagues in our private rented sector in terms of exactly those points that you raised. We already as a council do work in terms of a fitness test with landlords to assess in terms of a responsible landlord position. And again, built in within the scheme are those protections in terms of that as a council, we can conduct those fitness tests, and should a landlord not effectively pass those, then we have the right not to disperse the grant. And again, you know, we are collaborating really closely with the private rented team in terms of identifying any particular cases, and they will work on the ground with us where any particular issues or concerns are raised. So again, a full commitment that we will be working very closely with private sector colleagues on that.
Thanks. I think that answers the questions, okay. Okay, can I go to councillor Baker?
Thank you, Chair. It was only to agree with councillor Norris. I think it matters in actual fact that in such a diverse city as we've got, not only with people, but hills and vales and levelled services and different kinds of properties, that it is quite important that we check on the individual and don't go for a street, because unless we do that, we won't get a proper idea of what the outcome could be. 320 is not a lot, but it's enough to make a difference to a lot of people. So let's try and get it right. Thanks, Chair.
Okay, thanks for that comment. And councillor Chaplin?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for this report, Nathan. My question is about people who applied for the previous scheme, Paul mentioned it earlier. And there were, again, that scheme was also oversubscribed, as this one inevitably will be. But it was just a question about whether people who had applied before didn't get into that scheme, whether we've still got a list of those, and whether they can be notified that funding will now be available if they want to apply. Obviously, assuming they haven't gone ahead and done their own work.
Yes, absolutely. So we've got to maintain a register of interest. So again, we will utilise that in that first instance to contact households, make sure that they're aware that this scheme has gone live, and they can put an application in should they still wish.
Yeah, thanks. That's good. So I guess the point about targeting is that ultimately, it's a relatively small number of properties, not for want of trying. I think it's fair to say, Nathan, that you you pointed out that the council bid for a 12 million pound grant from government, and the government assessed that as being fully payable, but only gave 3 million. So it wasn't for want of trying, or that there was anything wrong with the bid. But yeah, it's only a fairly small amount. So 221 properties is one in a thousand homes for the city roughly, isn't it? Just another question. Councillor Turpin, do you want to come back for something else?
Yeah, thanks. I just want to dig a bit more into this areas. It's my view that the areas are much smaller wards, they're more like neighbourhoods. If you look at the census areas of data, I'm assuming they would be the areas that would be targeted if that was to remain in the policy. You know, my ward of Gleedless Valley has quite a wide band of wealth, you know, from extreme poverty to millionaires. So I wouldn't expect my ward, or any ward, to be looked at as an area of whatever it's called, decile of IMDB. So I would still like it to be in there because I think it would be targeting the areas that were in most need. And, you know, if you've got two people, or even three people in a household with jobs, 36,000 pounds is not a great deal to get to before, you know, it's still, there's still pretty low wages to get to 36,000 pounds if you've got two or more earners, assuming that if there's children or whatever living in the house, that their income would also be included. So I'm still arguing for that. And I would also say that if there is an insistence in just opening it up, that we, and it's means-tested, that we also look at savings of people. If you were to be eligible for universal credit, your payments would be reduced if you have more than 6,000 pounds in savings. I think if we're looking at people's income, I think we should also look at their savings. Like I said, it's perfectly feasible that a retired professional couple in Nether Edge, who are mortgage-free with plenty of cash in the bank, have got the wherewithal to get in here on a first come, first served basis. So I would like to include savings if we're going to lose the targeting the areas of greatest poverty.
Does anyone else want to comment on that issue? I mean, I'm conscious that there's some merit in discussing it, but equally, we've got to make a decision today on what to do with this, just to get it moving. I mean, do we have any comments on that? Is there anything for us to go? Councillor Norris?
Double checking, we've said have a gross annual income of 36,000 or less, or demonstrator seat of a specified means-tested benefit. Now, the means-tested benefit would cover that, what you were saying about savings. But if it's an or, do we want to put, if we're just looking at income, do we also want to add in what Paul was saying about savings for that group?
Or just change or to and?
Or just change or to and, but then that might make it too restrictive in that you can have people on that level that aren't claiming benefit.
I think to answer that question probably means that we'd have to sort of refer it back for a legal check about what would what would comply with the terms of the scheme, which we're presumably tied up to. So I'm kind of minded to think that we're possibly stuck with having to approve the policy that we've got in front of us today. But, you know, as well, councillor Chaplin, have you got a better way through on this?
Yeah, I think you're going along the right lines Douglas.
It's a pity we didn't have more of this discussion ahead of the meeting. I do think Paul does raise a valid point. And I think we need to come back and look at that for future years about the savings element also being included. But it's clear that government means testing will address some of it, but it won't cover all aspects.
Just checking out with Sherry's, who offer legal advice. I mean, what's the, just let me see, what's the thing through? Because I think might you just point out that, you know, Paul raised a good point about targeting. This possibly could be refined a bit. I'm just looking at, I mean, do we have? I think Paul raised a good point that you could end up, you know, spending grants on people who've actually got quite a lot of money in their own way. I know there's been a contrary view expressed there. Views on this, councillor Belbin?
I think the targeting strategy would still be targeted at those areas, wouldn't it? That are the lower desile. So I think it is taken into account to some extent because by really promoting it in those particular areas. I think where we are now, given, I think you're right, Chair, you know, we want to make sure that this is taken forward and I don't think we can afford to defer it. It seems sensible to me to go with. We can see there could potentially be loopholes, whichever way you address it, if you like. But that we go forward on the basis of what's in the paper. But let's look at how effective it is after the first year. You know, let's look at how effective this is and learn from it in the future. It just feels as if we don't want to be putting things back when I suspect we'll end up in a similar position where even if we approach it slightly differently, we still find ways where potentially those who aren't the most in need might benefit from it. But I think we've done the best that we can for this meeting.
Right, okay. I'm just conscious that we could defer and try and refine it, but I don't really want to be delaying the scheme and work to be done. Chris Allison, would you like to come in?
Yeah, just to put a clarity, Chair. The eligibility criteria is obviously set nationally by government. And within that, it does reference savings mustn't exceed fifty thousand pounds. Correct. Savings and investments exceeding fifty thousand pounds may not be eligible.
Right, so first of all, I think some important points raised. I think possibly the way to take it forward is to approve the scheme as it is set out. But to say, can we ask officers to have a look at just rechecking the wording of that? Because actually, as Chris pointed out, if there's a savings cap on eligibility as well, and that's not been taken account of in the report in front of us today, when possibly it should have been, we perhaps need to refer it back for a further legal check just to make sure that it's okay in some way. That sounds pretty woolly. Is it too woolly to be legal, Sherry, first of all?
I mean, that's absolutely right. I mean, you can, I mean, obviously approve it as it is with a note to say, do a legal check on that point. All the other options, which I think that is definitely the most preferable, or approve it subject to legal checking it. So there's two options, but I think the former is definitely the better way forward.
Chair, it's a government scheme. So surely they set it. So we have to comply with the government scheme?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Yeah.
And if that's fifty K, then that should be part of our scheme.
Councillor Tipping?
Yeah.
Then I'll try and wrap this up in this.
Yeah, sure. I would just disagree. Well, you are right, Penny, but I also disagree in the way that, you know, we have amended the scheme already. So, you know, if we can amend the scheme and remain within the criteria from the government or as we have already done, then why can't we also amend the scheme to say that you can't have savings of more than six thousand pounds? That's what it is for benefits. You know, if we're talking about equality or adversely inequality, then we could just be embedding inequality into this policy whereby a poor, hardworking family are not eligible, whereas a wealthy retired family are eligible. And that's what it looks like to me, you know. And I do appreciate that people want to get it going, but getting it going with embedded inequality is not worth getting it going.
But Paul?
Councillor Chaplin? Thank you, Chair. But Paul, we've just had advice which shows that with it being a national government scheme, it has ruled out your example of the catch rich person living in Nether Edge or a couple living in Nether Edge. Why you've got it in for Nether Edge, I'm not sure. Okay, they might have forty nine thousand pounds worth of savings and they would be eligible. But it's quite a big jump from that to the two hundred thousand example that you cited. I appreciate that some of those houses are effectively asset rich, but a lot of them are old Victorian piles, probably in need of a lot of care and attention to make them warmer than what they are already.
Okay, before I bring it out, I mean, I'm just conscious we're sort of in danger of arguing about how many angels dance on the head of a pin, to use the old Catholic thing. Reality is, isn't it, that we've only got funding for two hundred homes and it's not hard to find two hundred homes of people on low incomes in the whole of the city. Just to move this on, can just draw attention to recommendation one. He's asking us to approve that the local grant be administered. We take out the on first come, first served basis words out. And it says in accordance with the scheme's eligibility criteria. I think what this discussion's opened up is that we're not a hundred percent clear on having checked the eligibility criteria, frankly. That perhaps needs to be done, but whatever it is, as councillor Baker says, it's a government scheme and those eligibility criteria are broadly set. So probably suggests that we do approve it as it is today, but possibly, and we're going to ask legal advice on whether we could actually have make that subject to discretion, maybe delegate it to the director of housing to make minor changes to ensure that the scheme does meet the criteria. Would that be workable, first of all?
Yes, that is definitely workable. Yeah. I mean, it would obviously be at the head of housing's direction if he feels that it complies with the legislation, but yeah.
So that's a possible. I was wondering, Chris, would that be acceptable from your point of view, as a delegation? What do members here think about sort of making a note of that issue that's arisen, but making a decision or just to move it on? Any members, I mean, Paul really, anything to say on that? Or Mike proposing that we take something further? I'll just ask the members first and then come back to you, Nathan.
Well, I'm not hugely happy about it. I mean, you know, do you expect me to be? It just seems to be like another one of those things where it's like, oh, it's all right, we've got this far, let's just get on with it, when, you know, there's something wrong with it in my point of view. But anyway, I'm sure I won't win a vote on my own, although I may think about abstaining. But I do have a question on the actual thing to come back to once we're finished with this.
Okay, can we just take further questions then? I think we can see where we're going with this. Yeah, ask your question.
Okay, thank you. So I was going to ask this question thinking about the areas it was being targeted in. So when it's been targeted, promoted, marketed, however we're going to think about it now, is how will we reach people whose English is not their first language?
So from previous schemes, we've done a lot of work in terms of alignment with local organisations and institutions. So again, when we, and I think just a point to raise in terms of timeframes, because we are realistically at least four to eight weeks at least before we could mobilise this scheme. So there's a lot of work to be done to kind of get us to that point. So again, if that invites some opportunity for any final clarifications, because again, it'd be incumbent on me just to flag that the way the scheme is designed is that we don't just get this pot of money across the three years. There are sort of points against each financial year where if we've not spent the profiled amount of money within that year, we lose it. So again, it's just a risk to highlight that if we were to delay the implementation of the scheme, there is an inherent risk that we potentially could lose out on deployment of some of this funding. But yeah, to say that we work closely with a range of organisations. One of the key criteria that we selected our delivery partner is very much in terms of how they are able to provide language translation support as well. So again, it's about ensuring being in the communities, using those frontline resources. And again, equally council resources, so we've got a lot of frontline resources. We do a lot of work in terms of promoting the scheme across a range of different sector organisations within the community that will support that outreach work.
Okay, thanks. Further questions?
Yes, please. In monitoring the impact of this service, this initiative, in much the same way as the last item where we're going to measure the carbon, the cost effectiveness, the whole life carbon, it would be good if we can apply those same models to this initiative as well. But also additionally, the demographics of the people who've been successful with the grants, you know, race, age, the geographical area those grants come from and the market value of the home that's been improved. Is that all right?
The one you can answer? Is there anything to add to that, Dean? It's points raised, isn't it? Councillor Belbin, we want to come back.
Well, it was coming back to the earlier discussion, but just to be really brief, I feel if we are trying to give guidance to officers on how we approach this, I do feel that we should be focused on how do we include the people who are in the most need, rather than how we exclude people. And I feel that should be a point of principle really in how we're working on this.
Yeah, that's, I'm sure something that people would agree with about inclusion. Councillor Norris, will we? Yeah?
Can I ask a question on a different element?
Yes, yeah.
Just looking at the, on page ninety six, it says it'd be advisable to ensure that the chosen delivery partner gives enforceable warranties. I would strengthen that to essential. I know we've got the trust mark already. I just wondered what additional warranties are available or we would want. I mean, you may not need to answer that now, but I was just thinking in principle, we should have the maximum enforceable warranties that we can practically do, given the constraints of delivery that we've talked about.
Yes, I think it's a good point. Are you able to tell us about the warranties, just in case we end up with an disorder where things go horribly wrong in three years' time?
Yeah, and I think there may just be a slight transition in terms of wording. We've not yet agreed the contracts with the delivery partner. Clearly, I can go away and just ensure that that is built in. I'm as confident as I can be that that has been a requirement of all previous contracts and will be within this one, but I will certainly double check.
Right, thanks for undertaking. Okay. Can we see if we can conclude this item? So just procedurally, so if we look at page ninety one, we've got four recommendations. So I suppose first of all, going to propose that we make the amendment of taking out the words first come, first served basis. And yeah, in fact, I'm just going to propose that first of all. Is that something that everyone's agreed with? Yeah. So we'll take those words out. And then the second one is to bring in, in recommendation two, to replace appendix A with the new appendix A that's been circulated. So that's the one that brings in the priority categories, but also, as we now know, removes the issue about slightly higher income people. Can I check if, well, let me say, I'm proposing that as an amendment to replace appendix A with the new appendix A. So first of all, are people happy, yeah, to second that? Alison, you happy?
Just wanted to clarify my understanding is that what we're saying is that we want to approve it as is, but with a legal note about eligibility. And that's going to be sorted and just added upon by the director of housing? Yeah, I'm happy. If that's what we're doing, I'm happy to second it.
That is what we're doing, yeah. So I'm trying to do it in a step by step bit. So this is just about replacing the pages that are in the paper with the pages that are on our desk so that we know what's on the agenda. Yeah. And then the second recommendation after that is to add the words of some form, but basically saying, subject to the eligibility criteria being checked again and delegating authority to the director of housing to make changes as appropriate. And I'll ask Sherry just to help with the exact wording afterwards, but something of that principle. So that would be a recommendation to include there. And then finally, we'd like to ask for a vote on the whole lot put together if those changes are approved for the agenda. So yeah, that's laboring the point. Yeah. I'm just going to ask first of all, do people want to take all those amendments together? Or do people actually want to vote on it? Probably all do really want to vote on it. Okay, all right. So we do need a vote on it, okay. Can I have a second then for all those proposals? So councillor Norris, you'll second all those. And then we can have a vote on the substantive amendment with all those, sorry, substantive set of recommendations with all those amendments in. Okay. So have a, yeah, put the vote if that's okay, so we can record how we stand. Is everyone happy to vote on that basis?
You voted for the amendments together and then the substantive articles?
Yeah, so, sorry, yes, you're quite right. So councillor Norris has seconded what's proposing to bring those amendments in. So yes, I do need to have a vote on bringing those amendments in. So can I ask if people are happy to bring those amendments in, that they'll vote? By show of hands, so that's that's everyone. Paul, you're voting against that one?
I'm going to abstain on.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm going to abstain on the amendments, Jeff.
Thanks. Okay, so that's, yeah, so that's been approved, okay. And we can note that you're abstaining on bringing that amendment in. And so given that that amendment has been brought in, so we've got the new revised policy in front of us, we need to call a vote on people accepting those amended recommendations and effectively approving the new policy. So can take a vote on those in favour of that. So we've got there, and Paul, do you want to vote against? This is the substantive one in effect, yeah.
Yeah, for reasons of removing the targeting from the areas of greatest deprivation and coincidentally lowest voter turnout to areas of lesser deprivation and higher voter turnout, I'm voting against this report.
So voting against, okay. But I can say that that's been carried as amended. And that's the end of that item, noting there is a little bit more work to do. But yeah, thanks for bearing with me. Thanks, Sherry, for helping out on just getting that through there. But yeah, there's some good points there. So Nathan, back to you. Thanks for actually getting in this money from central government, getting it into some sort of scheme. And whilst there's a bit of polishing of the corners still to do, it'd be good to actually get some of those grants out as soon as possible. Thank you very much. Okay, all right. So go back to the agenda. What item are we on now? We've done that one, so we're on to the asbestos management policy. Right, okay. Um, we've done that one, so we're on to the asbestos management policy. Right, okay. So it's item eight on the agenda. Thanks for that. Kayla, do you want to? If you can, yeah, get your seat. Would you like to introduce yourself, Kayla, for the committee and for the record of the webcast? And yeah, then tell us briefly about the new asbestos management policy.
Yes, um, hello, my name is Kayla Kamagian, and I'm an asset policy officer for the asset management team. Um, I bring to you today the asset management, uh, sorry, not the asset management policy, that's for ages, the asbestos management policy, very different. Hopefully you've read the entire policy and all the accompanying papers, so I'll be exceptionally brief. Uh, this is essentially um, a strategic update to the asbestos policy, which has been in place since 2009. Um, it hasn't had essentially an editorial update since 2012. Instead, we just kept adding things to it. This policy update meets the safety and quality standard, as well as all relevant regulatory standards, um, which are laid out in the policy specifically. This policy applies only to the housing revenue fund properties. Um, yeah, essentially all of the updates um, are just editorial. It shortened everything out and we pulled out um, a separate document um, to help people with uh, managing everything. And then we changed uh, the five-year plan to a four-year plan. It was previously a five-year cycle, so it actually just restarted, year five was year one again. We've made it more clear by making it a four-year uh, plan. That's essentially the majority of all of the changes. And we ask that the committee consider and approve the amendments to the policy.
Right, thank you. It's a really, a brief summary there, um, very, very concise. Dean, anything to add?
Uh, nothing to add, Chair, apart from the fact that this covers both domestic properties and communal areas within, within the report. So we've got all of our asset covered uh, in the housing stock.
Right, thanks, Kayla, for clarification. Thanks very much, Kayla, that's, that is a good piece of work. Um, we're going to open up to questions for members, appreciate there may not be anything. But there is, there's Councillor Norris.
This may be, may not understand the technical side of it, but as part of the asbestos policy, I understand we have asbestos surveys. And I know we're going to be doing, we are continuing to do a large number of stock condition surveys, and I wonder what the relationship between those two were like? Is there any, um, you know, a bit like digging up the road three times, four months apart? You know, is there any sort of efficiency savings with coordinating that? And is that part of the plan going forward?
Yeah, but thank you, Councillor Norris. What we're trying to do here, we've got quite a few regulatory compliance functions to undertake in all of our stock. So we mentioned the stock condition surveys, we've got the gas servicing, we've got the electric safety testing, we've got our asbestos testing. What we want to be able to do is give clarity and confidence to our residents that we're going to try and enter their homes as few times as possible to get this work done. So part of the work that we're doing is to understand the connectivity between these pieces of work. So at some point, once we've landed on the asset management strategy in relation to our inspection cycles, one of the challenges that we've got is the existing inspection cycles for each of our properties is slightly out of sync. So gas we have to do every year, electric testing we have to do every five years. So to align them will take a piece of work, but that's one of the things that we'll be doing in 25, 26 to minimise the impact on our residents.
Thanks. Anything else to come back?
Just, and so presumably asbestos, because I'm thinking also that a stock condition survey potentially might flag up the need for pushing up the timing of an asbestos survey, for instance?
What, what the stock condition survey will do, and it will identify if there's a breach of any asbestos within a property, they'll raise it as an immediate HHSRS cat one repaired, so we have to deal with that within 24 hours. So whilst the stock condition surveys themselves won't do an asbestos survey, they will identify where there is a breach, and then we'll go and rectify the problem.
Thanks very much. Any other questions? If not, I'm going to ask people to look at page 33 for the recommendations. Uh, so there's, essentially it's to approve the asset asbestos management policy that Kayla's described. It's in the form attached to appendix one in the papers. And then second, there is a recommendation to note that the approval of it is essential to ensuring practices continue to follow regulatory guidelines. But principally, it's approving the policy that's now in front of us. Is everyone happy to do that? Should they nod? Right, so we'll take that as a unanimous resolution there. Thank you very much. Thanks for getting that one through very quickly. That's very efficient, Kayla. And then we're on to kitchens. So I think Jason, I think you're coming over. Wait, just check, yeah, we're doing the commission decision on contract for the supply of kitchens, item 10 on the agenda. So yeah, welcome, Jason. But if you've got, yeah, if you want to put your name card up and maybe you could take Dean's down. If you'd like to, obviously introduce yourself for the record and for the webcast, and then give us a fairly brief summary for reports, which you've provided for us today.
Morning, everybody. Jason Peckham, Commercial Service Manager. Here this morning on behalf of Housing Maintenance and Repair Services. Here to basically request a commissioning decision to allow us to procure a contract for the supply of kitchens to be installed within our social housing estate. We'll be looking into, looking to enter into a four-year agreement to a value up to around 2.9 million pounds. It is what it says on the tin, if you like. It's the supply of kitchens, cupboards, drawer units, work tops, et cetera. It's supply only. We'll be fitting via our own internal staff or occasionally via contractors when we need that kind of support. And uh, it is, like I said, four years. We've got kitchens, obviously, and all our, stating the obvious, but we've got kitchens in all the houses. They need to be maintained. We need that continuity of supply going forward to be able to keep them up to a standard that's required.
As you say, does what it says on the tin, yeah. Councillor Bellburn's got a question, and then so does Councillor Chaplin.
Thank you. I just wanted to check, because if we change suppliers, do we end up with a risk that we've got? I, I quite often get residents who say to me, I need new cupboard door. And then we find out we're out of stock of the cupboard door. We, we no longer stock the cupboard doors or can no longer get them, and people end up with these mismatched kitchens all over the place. And I just wondered if there's any uh, way of managing that, basically. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a little bit unusual, the kitchen contract, like with certain of the contracts that we deal with day in, day out, we, you know, but we need continuity of supply. We've been using the same kitchen supplier now for years and years. I think, I think some people, we've been scheduled up on that third iteration of the same suppliers kitchen. So when we go out to visit a house and we need new handles and whatever, it's important to us from a kind of economic and efficiency sense that we know what type handle we're going to need when we get out there, because we've got that continuity of supply. So yes, the answer, the simple answer to the question is, yeah, we'll be having continuity of supply. And uh, changes, if you like, when they come in, there will be kind of that parallel. And what we don't want to do is get into a situation where we've got five, six different kinds of kitchens across the city. Somebody's going out to affect a repair, what kind of cupboard is it, where are the hinges? It's, so we, we do, we take that very seriously, if you like, to make sure that the customer at the end of the day gets an efficient service on what they need.
Thanks, yeah. Does that answer the question? Okay, so yeah, Councillor Chaplin.
Thank you, Chair. Um, thank you for this report. It is encouraging to hear that we're going to have continuity of supply through this contract with, with existing suppliers. I've actually got four areas of question, because my warding does have a lot of coun- council homes in it. The first is, note that covers for um, for, for Hobbs, the, the vent, the ventilation covers are, are excl-, the extraction, for extraction are excluded. But I'm, I'm mindful that kitchens are one of the areas where often damp and mould can take a hold. And not all kitchens have vents and um, yeah, it, yeah, extract, extractors. So I was wondering how, how that can be resolved within it. Do you want me to go through the others?
Well, do you want to answer that question first? Um, then we can go back. That's a good, sweet question.
Uh, we've got kind of the extraction units, I think I mentioned in the report, it's not included in part of this supply, that the fact that is that we have other suppliers that supply sinks and taps, and so we have access to everything we need in order to put what's needed in the kitchen. In terms of the operation of whether the, whether there's extraction in the kitchen, I'm sure I'm not operating in the sense of going out and doing this kind of work, but I'm sure that there's standards in there. And if we need to fit an extractor fan, we have the supplier that we can get an extractor fan from, and we've got the skills and resources to install that. So there's, there isn't an issue around not being able to get the materials, if you like. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I apologize for that. No, that, that is good, that is good to know. So I think that, that leads on to a more, more general question about damp and mould. When they're taking the, when your guys are taking out the old kitchen units, and you may come across damp and mould that has not previously been flagged up by tenants. Do you automatically have a process for resolving that? Or would you just, do they just go in and, and fit the new units regardless?
I would fully expect if, given this, the profile of damp and mould, we're investing quite a lot of money, extra money in probably the council in addressing that kind of problem, recognise the issues. Any members of staff that come across, we've been doing internal training in spotting it, that kind of, that no, I'd be, I would be flabbergasted if someone removed a kitchen, identified the mould issues, something like that, and then just basically covered it up again by putting another kitchen. They should be coming back and saying, look, we're on issue with it. And then we'd address that, make remedial action before we installed the kitchen. And that's what should be done. And I think it's a common sense kind of approach. It's uh, it's.
No, that, that is, that is really good to know, given the profile that damp and mould has had in, had in recent years, and that uh, um, council staff have, have been getting training on that, so they know what they're looking for. And hopefully tenants will be um, glad, glad to know that that is, that is the case. On, on the actual, not, I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure our, our suppliers are, are good quality suppliers, but e- even good quality suppliers can occasionally send through stuff that's not quite up to standard. So do we have a, a warranty or guarantee process that's in place so that if tenants discover after three or six months that some, um, the covering is coming off door, door panels and, and the like, that those can be replaced at a later date, as you would expect from a good quality private supplier?
Yeah, it's, it's, again, it's the very similar kind of thing, is that you get a warranty on these products, and it'd be, wouldn't necessarily be the resident would have to ask for that. It should be our staff, operational staff. Remember, if something's been in for a year and we suddenly find it's delaminating, we'd address that in a particular, and what we'd also do going forward is we'd, we'd be having meetings with that contractor, kind of contract management meeting. So any kind of recurring issues or anything that comes up, and we can address it as a council, rather than an individual problem. And that's part of the kind of contract management that we try and wrap around these contracts. So that it's not, like you said, these things should get highlighted. And to be fair, not everything does get highlighted all the time. It's a big organisation. But we try and record these kind of things. And if we do have a quality issue, we will be going back. The specification is there, there's dance British standards, it's all been agreed, et cetera, so it's in black and white what we expect on that contract. And if we start deviating away from that, we'll be taking that, we, we don't just let it happen, we'll, we'll take action.
Any more questions?
Thank you for that. One last one. Sadly, our, our kitchens do vary in size across the estate. Uh, I do have a small number of proper, I know, I'm aware of a small number of properties where the kitchens are, are quite minimal for the, for the size of household. And we've really got a question about what, what can be done where, where they are short of cupboard space in the, in the kitchen. But there might be a room nearby or the adjacent room where um, they could take those, um, could take cupboard space that otherwise would have been put in, into a kitchen.
It's probably, uh, sorry, Chair, jumped in without even. It's not good, is it? It's probably an asset management question, Councillor. I think, um, you know, notably, when some of our properties were designed and built many decades ago, people lived in their kitchens differently. And uh, as we all know, things go, also go full circles. So we would have had pantries in days of old, they were taken out and now people like pantries again. So we do have to, um, we look at it in terms of that asset management approach and that, how the residents want to live in their homes. So we do make adjustments um, for individual kitchens as per requests, if it is practicable and, and provides better living.
So you, 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 thanks for that, Chris. You're saying that's in, in consultation with the, the tenants that are living there at the time?
Yeah.
But that, that's really good to know. Thank you.
Thank you both. Okay. Chris, you want to turn the mic off on yours? And go to Councillor Turpin.
Thank you. So any, anyone who works in the construction industry could tell you whose kitchens are good and whose kitchens are bad, and all those kitchens in between. And um, and you know, and sort of in the trade, you'd say a landlord kitchen would usually be your cheapest one, and they're not very good. And they normally, the, 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 the plan is to replace them after a couple of years or whatever, as they fall apart. But on the other hand, we also know that there are large national providers of kitchens who aren't cheap, but still are pretty low quality. So how are you going to compare the bids that is, that is basically, or, or normally a desk exercise? How are you going to make sure that we're getting good value for money? That kitchens that are robust enough within an affordable price range, if that's all right? And short second one, will there be any weighting in the procurement for a local, non-national or local or regional kind of, you know, non-national provider of kitchens?
In terms of quality, yeah. It is, I understand what you're saying there. The, we have a specification effectively, and that specification specifies the standard it has to be made to, the kind of content of recycled materials, so on and so forth. We are tied, as I mentioned earlier, in terms of the existing kitchen. We need, if we're going out to a house, we've got, we cannot go out and just put any door hinge, it'll be in a different place, we need. So we need that continuity of supply for us existing. So we are tied to a certain extent. Moving forward, uh, I wasn't involved, but Housing Asset Management actually took a review of available kitchens for new installations. And the understanding is that a number of suppliers were brought in. Members of TARA's and various members of the housing teams actually assessed the kitchens, looked at them in terms of quality, like you said, the touch and the feel, rather than just a paper kind of exercise. So we, we have an alternative kitchen, if you like. In terms of procurement, because we need that continuity of supply for existing, we can't really tender it in a sense, because if I was to tender it and under a kind of an open tender with everybody who can bid, so picking them out, Joe Block's kitchens wins that tender, but he can't supply the same kitchen units that we've already installed, we're in a bit of a pickle. So its procurement strategy is, is, is a bit ta-, a bit targeted, if you like, in terms of we have to go for the kind of stuff we need, rather than if I was going for a, a roofing contract, a roof's a roof, even though we can, we do a specification, it has to be a certain standard, and we can get people to come in and do that with a kitchen. I've got to maintain that particular style and make of kitchen in that person's residence. So I'm, I'm, I've got that to consider as well as just going out and picking a kitchen. And it is difficult sometimes in terms of, we always look to go local. That's one of the first things we consider. Keep the Sheffield pound in the Sheffield pocket, it's one thing we can do. But again, we have to consider that kind of, have we got a kitchen manufacturer within Sheffield that can supply the product that we need at a reasonable kind of rate, if you like? So it is a bit peculiar on this kitchen as well, because normally on a lot of stuff, you've been, a tap is a tap, you know what I mean? In, in a sense, but this is a bit more, so the procurement strategy would be slightly different on this one, in that we need to keep, get access to exist, as this exit, our That we need to keep, get access to exist, our existing kitchen supplier to maintain those. Does that make sense, sorry?
Yeah, thanks. That's actually, that's really interesting. And actually, it would be remiss of me not to not to just ask if that's a legal procurement method? Because it sounds like the 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 existing supplier is kind of, you know, what's what's the word? They're tied in. It's, you know, if we've got to stick with their kitchens, that means that it's not a procurement at all. There's no, nobody, no other provider is going to be able to win a contract with Sheffield City Council. And isn't that unlawful?
Do you want to say, Jason, do you want to answer that first before I bring in Sherry or? Sherry, you have to.
I mean, just my, just. I think it's because somebody's got theirs on as well. But no, just to make the point is, is that obviously when you you do the procurement and that process, don't you even look at that when you're actually tendering for the work? So that's part of the procurement process. And I assume if you, if nobody else can, are you are you saying that the kitchens that are on now, you're going to try and mirror what you've got there at the moment? I think that's what you're saying, isn't it? And so there's going to be a limited amount of kitchen providers that can provide that. But as long as we go through that process and that procurement process where that is identified, then it will be, it will be legal, yes. Yeah, I mean, you're obviously going to have to look at a lot, when you're looking at the legal process. And I agree, I agree with you that the procurement rules are very stringent, and as you know they are. But I think if we've got a particular, you know, we're identifying something particular and nuanced, then obviously you can look around, you know, there's, as long as you've got that and you've reviewed that and you've looked at that, then you can, you can work it from a legal perspective. Yeah.
Sorry, that's, I mean, I'm not opposing what you're doing. I'm just questioning that. Because, you know, we've seen it before, haven't we, where there's been an existing provider of service, but the councils had to go to the full market. And so if you're, if 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 we're going to the full market, but then bidders have to provide evidence that they can match existing kitchens, that's, that's one thing, but I just didn't get that understanding from it. I, I thought it meant that the existing provider was baked in, no pun intended.
Yeah.
Because they provide kitchens that have been provided for the last.
There's always going to be nuances, isn't there, in any sort of procurement exercise? Whatever, you know, there's always going to be a specific model. So as long as your tender document is, that's what, that's what you're looking for. And as long as you go through the process, then it is completely legal. Yeah.
Right, thanks. Yeah. Jason, was there anything you want to respond to on that?
Just very quickly, it was just, yeah, we do everything through our legal team and our commercial partners kind of thing. In terms of, at the end of the day, it's what we want, it's all done above, above, above. But I do understand your kind of thing is that, are we going to be forever? Because I mean, in 30 years' time, are we just, well, not ideally, but what we need to do is to manage the kind of transition. If we're going to different routes, and I might not have been as articulate as I should have been making that point, is that if we're transitioning to a new kitchen, we don't just stop and start. We have to transition and we have to maintain the kitchens we've got whilst we move to that new style of kitchen. That makes more sense, sorry.
Sorry, I feel like I'm like going over something that's really standard. So will there be more than one, potentially more than one company?
On this particular contract, yes, may well be. We may well have a contract to maintain the existing stock. So that's one fixed kitchens and put, replace a cupboard door that matches. And in order to go down that separate or new kitchen. And what the way I envisage it happening is that if someone needs a full kitchen installing, we'd install a new style of kitchen, the Sheffield new kitchen, and keep the others going, everything what I mean.
That's okay. Yeah. Chris, I'll bring in.
Thank you, Chair. Not the detail of this particular element, but maybe to give some context for members. So members will remember they approved the interim asset management strategy at their last meeting. And and this is the sort of enabler to allow us to deliver that interim asset management strategy. The asset management strategy they will see in March 2026 would include a procurement approach, which may propose or suggest different approaches that we're taking now to more than one area, component areas, as in kitchens and bathrooms. It may wrap those up with other ones. It may stay exactly the same, but it will be coming back as part of a strategic approach, to members.
Right, okay, great. So, so in short, yeah, our tenants need kitchens and they need the right kitchens. And it should be a local supplier if possible. So with that in mind, shall we look at the recommendation? It's on page 77, and essentially to approve the commissioning of a supply of kitchens. Everyone happy to approve that? Thank you very much then, all right. And we'll look forward, Jason, to hearing more about that. Thank you. Right. So now we're on to the final item, which is item 12, so which is actually on the right place on the agenda. So there we are. We've got a consultation response. I think Suzanne and Tony are coming up to the hot seats. And yeah, do you want to take your places? And as before, would you like to put the mic on, introduce yourselves for the committee and the webcast? And then just give the summary of the paper that you've brought forward?
Yeah, hi, everybody. I'm Tony Ellingham. I'm the commissioning manager.
Okay, sorry. Hi, I'm Suzanne Allen, Head of Citywide Housing Services.
And we're here to talk about the report that we've submitted, which is our suggested response to consultation about the Supported Accommodation Regulatory Oversight Act. So this is a piece of legislation that's already in force. But the the consultation is about the implementation of the regulations. The consultation will take place in four parts. Part one is the bit that we're talking about today. There'll be further consultation opportunities in the summer. And then the third part, we've not been given a date when that will take place yet by NHCLG. And we will look to put that on the the forward plan so that we can programme the discussions in with yourselves going forward. Part one looks, I'm, part one looks at standards, at licensing and at housing benefit issues. There are over 90 questions, so I'm not going to go into all the questions unless unless members have any particular queries. I'll just talk about the process and the themes really that we've highlighted. So it's been very much a collaborative process. We've already got a task and finish group that's set up that involves colleagues from across the council who have expertise in the areas that relate to the new regulations. And we've used that task and finish group to ensure that we get a collaborative approach to responding to the to the questions. The key themes that we've emphasised is emphasising the impact that this has on us as a local authority. So it will change quite significantly the relationship that we have as a local authority with a range of accommodation providers, the providers that fall under the classification of exempt accommodation providers. So it will change our relationship with them. It will mean that we've got new responsibilities around overseeing and enforcing regulations. We've said that that's important, that that's resourced properly. And that's not just around central government making sure that that's fully funded, but it's around technical support and advice so that local authorities can act in a consistent way in terms of implementing and overseeing the regulations and making sure that we've got sufficient lead-in time to make sure that we've we've got all the arrangements set up properly. We've also, although it's not strictly, it's not part of the regulations consultation, we've highlighted the concerns that we have around housing benefit subsidy loss, that that's having a significant impact on not just our local authority budget, but many other local authorities. The legislation doesn't, doesn't really address that. But we felt it was important to highlight that. In broad terms, we really welcome the legislation. It's a real good opportunity to ensure that quality in this sector is improved. But it's really important for that to happen, that that there is proper consultation, that local authorities have listened to and that the issues that we raise are taken on board. And we have been working closely with local government association and talking to other local authorities to check our understanding and approach and make sure that that's in line with best practice nationally. The recommendation is that you approve our draft responses and that you note the work, the other work that's taking place across the council to prepare for the implementation of the legislation.
Thanks very much. Anything to add, Suzanne? I think Tony's covered everything.
I think Tony's covered everything. I think just again emphasise how important this legislation is for vulnerable people living in very often accommodation which isn't of sufficient quality or providing the support that's required at a cost that is far too high for them and the local authority.
Right, thanks. So obviously this is a government consultation, isn't it? So the government may or may not take account of whatever we send in, but we'll have to see. And I think you're right to say welcome the legislation. And I'm glad to see a positive approach in this. I think it's right to assert that the local authority should be involved with regulating social housing. And you're very right to pick up the issue about cost as well and that local authorities don't run afresh yet. So have got any questions? I know members have had sight of this before. Questions, councillor Belbin?
It's just a very quick comment really to say thanks. That's a really helpful introduction, I think. I think there's been examples in other cities, haven't there, where we've seen significant fraud around this? And it's really important that we're getting ahead. And as you say, that is not just about the cost of councils, which can be absolutely enormous. But it's also at the cost of the mental health and suffering of vulnerable people who should be who should be getting this kind of support and in some cases weren't. So I think that was really helpful and look forward to hearing how the legislation develops to support that. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. Anyone else? Councillor Turpin?
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for doing this work. It is really important. And I'm sure that your responses are very much on the on the head of the nail. I just wanted to ask where if, you know, if 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 we as the council were to were to run a consultation, you know, we go out and speak to people and we have a public engagement event and things like that. And so we don't just want people to fill in forms, we want to have the conversations. And and as I say, we would accept that, I mean, we don't always do we, but you know, we would accept that that is the gold standard of a consultation is to have those conversations. Are you expecting to have conversations with the government? Or will the only interaction be the responses to these questions?
I think Suzanne will have some comments here.
Yes, so it's a really good point. And alongside the surveys which are there for people to fill in, as you see, 150-page document which we have worked through as a team, we do have a dialogue with government about the new regulations as well. And to be fair, they are talking to local authorities to say, how would it work? What do you think? And we are putting forward our ideas as well as to the survey. So for example, we've already undertaken, it's in draft form, a specialist accommodation needs assessment. And that is one of the new requirements. They haven't yet set out how that will be done. There isn't any template. So we're saying, well, we've, we've already started that work. Would you like to have a look at what we've done and work with us? And our, as you've, as you've said, Paul, our approach is very much about the customer, the resident. What is in it for them? And again, we want to see strong customer voice. And I think one of the important things about this opportunity is it gives visibility. And what we will be doing locally is ensuring that the people the housing is designed for have clear roots in for them to say what they think, both in terms of what's good, what isn't so good, and what the planning needs to be going forward. Because again, it also brings in a requirement to have a local strategy around supported housing, which is great. And again, for us, that's got to reflect what people require. So I think there's good, good opportunities for more co-production. So yes, absolutely, we want the guidance from government, but we want to inform them as well.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Norris?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for what seemed like a clear and sensible set of responses. I particularly felt it was important that we, as you talked about, we stressed lead-in time and appropriate new burden support, not just funding but technical support. I thought, looking at providers as well, you've mentioned about support for providers to attain the standards and supported training for staff, that training for staff in this doesn't, can't be optional. It has to, that has to be, you know, within paid time, it has to be accessible, all those things. Whistleblowing systems for staff and residents. And independent, so it was interesting, you mentioned the needs assessment, but the need for independent needs assessment and flexible needs assessment, not one-size-fits-all. So I really appreciate all those points and I think they're strong and we need to, you know, it's good that you're pursuing them going forward.
Thanks very much. Okay. So I think everyone seems to be in agreement. This is the right sort of message sent to government. And I suppose we really look forward to the government bringing forward regulations onto the Act as soon as possible, because it is ultimately a very vulnerable group of people who live in supported accommodation. And it can be quite vulnerable to exploitation, and that's why it's important to have that oversight. So if we just look at the recommendation of the day, it's on page 195. And as Tonya said, it's essentially to approve the proposed consultation which we have in front of us. And also to, secondly, to note the work being undertaken and ongoing within the council to prepare for the implementation of the Supported Housing Regulatory Oversight Act. So if everyone's happy to, those kind of quick show of hands, say that's approved, have that. Thank you very much. So that's a unanimous vote on that. So thanks for the piece of work. Good luck with that. And we'll see, make sure we send off before the deadline, which you will. Yeah, good luck with the ongoing work. So that is all the items on the agenda. So we can draw this meeting to a close, slightly ahead of schedule. But not just yet. So before you get your handbags and coats on, I just want to say, this is Chris's last meeting as interim director of housing. Because we've got our new permanent director of housing, James Clark, starting at the end of this month, Monday, yeah. So yeah, your last meeting where you're present here in the director of housing role. So I think we just want to say a big thanks to Chris for steering us through a lot of quite difficult and substantial stuff over the last, the last few months that you've been here. It's, how many months has it you've been here, Chris? You've lost. 13, 13, unlucky for some. I thought it was over a year. So yeah, I think we can all say thanks for that, because you've obviously come in after we've had, you know, a previous director of housing who was with the council for a very long time. You come in with a fresh pair of eyes and a huge amount of knowledge of the housing association sector, which I think has been really refreshing to the local authority here. The huge experience of the new regime of regulatory oversight of ourselves with the regulator of social housing. And that's, you know, and is still, you know, a massive challenge ongoing to, you know, meet those new standards. It's partly why we've been pushing through all these new policies, getting, getting a lot of things straightened out and codified so that we've got clearer ways of working. And you think your steer on that, Chris, has been really, really invaluable as well as getting to the the culture of a service that is a pretty big organisation in the council. And, you know, in some ways had not changed many years and has been forced to change a bit through a number of things. There's a lot of things to steer through there. And it's a service that's fundamentally for, you know, tenants in 38,000 homes across the city. It's a lot of people that the council is directly responsible for and each of whom deserves a good, decent, safe, warm home that they want to live in. So that's important for us all. So yeah, massive thanks to you for everything you've done, Chris. And I think we can be pleased to say that you're not actually leaving. You're, we're going to keep. to keep you on because we have useful things for you to do. So you'll be around, and that will be a massive help as well to transition over to James as he comes in as the new director of housing. So would people like to sort of formally record their thanks to Chris? And then we can put that in the minutes, Amanda. And I think you should go down on the record there. But yeah, personal thanks from me. I just want to add anything without anything too much and making Chris squirm with embarrassment.
Too late. Yeah, I just wanted to add to what you'd said. Thank you very much. And it's been a really, for me, a really good balance between leading from the front and collaboration, and very patient and good-humoured collaboration at that. So I very much appreciate it.
And I just want a personal thanks, Chris, because you've always been there, and you've always managed to smile. So obviously, Doug, you know, we're around when you first came, and it's been quite a journey. And we've been very grateful for your support, which has been, as I said, not only good humour, but straight to the point and on target. So thank you very much.
There we are. Well, thanks. That's perhaps a good point to round it up. And we'll record those thanks. And we'll see very shortly. So that's it. Okay. I think that is the end of the meeting. So let's close the meeting, turn the webcast off, and do our next things. So big thanks to everyone. Okay.